All right, well, good evening and welcome to the June 13th Planning Commission meeting. I can't believe it's June 13th already. So, we've got roll call and Chris, you're gonna do that in place of Jackie?
Yes, I am. Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Dorson?
Present.
Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Mottaw?
Here.
Commissioner Jones? Nope. Commissioner Nemirov?
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett? Commissioner Barubi?
Here.
And Chair Olson?
Here. Thank you. So, the next is approval of the meeting agenda. Does anyone have any edits or changes to it? Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the meeting minutes. Did we have any changes or edits to those? Were they? Did we even get them? There's no minutes. Got it. I was gonna say, where are those? Okay. Moving on. We have three public hearings and the first one is a variance request to the side yard setback for an addition at 6301 Westwood Court.
The subject property 6301 Westwood Court is approximately 32,000 square feet in area and is located on the southeast corner of Westwood Court and Schaefer Road. The existing home on the lot is a one-story Rambler that was built in 1956. The applicant is proposing a 1.9-foot variance to the east property line to allow for an 800-square-foot two-car garage and kitchen addition. The existing home currently has a tuck-under two-car garage and the applicant is undergoing the addition and the remodeling project to have garage access on the first floor of the home. Today, the home complies with all required setbacks, but the home is oriented much closer to the east property line than the west. The proposed addition is approximately 22 by 37 feet and is just over 800 square feet. Like I said, the house is oriented towards Westwood Court, much closer to the east property line than the west. The existing house setback is approximately 100 feet from the west property line, 60 feet from the north, and 30 feet from the east side currently. And with the proposed addition, the new proposed setback is 8.1 feet. Other than the east setback, the home and proposed addition meets all other zoning requirements. The proposed grading and drainage pass will closely mimic what's out on the site today. The environmental engineer has reviewed the application and has submitted a memo as well as comments in your packet tonight. In his memo, he noted that there will be mitigation required due to storm sewer capacity and those plans will be reviewed with the building permit. Minnesota statute and the Edina zoning ordinance require a few things for a variance to be granted. The variance needs to relieve practical difficulties, needs to prove that there are unique circumstances to the property, and that the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The practical difficulty is that the lot is not squared and the lot lines gradually get closer to the existing structure heading south. The existing home, like I mentioned, is oriented much closer to the east property than the west. And granting the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The addition will be seamless and will look as if it were part of the original plan and there are homes surrounding the subject property with similar scale. Tonight, the recommended action is to approve a 1.9-foot side yard setback variance to the east property line at 6301 Westwood Court. Staff recommends approval of the variance as requested, subject to the findings listed in the staff report and subject to the plans presented, as well as compliance with the conditions and the comments as outlined in the engineer's memo. Have any questions?
Thank you, Emily. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Lee?
Emily, so the intent is to actually add a second garage, is that correct?
Yes, there's a currently a tuck-under garage that's below the first floor of the home. And so, the intention is to add a second garage that will be accessed from the main floor of the home.
Okay, so, the existing garage is not going to go away. It will remain.
Mm-hmm.
Existing driveway as well.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have a lot of homes that have two garages? Two car garages with two driveways?
I can't say two separate car garages, but I know there's homes in Edina that have two curb cuts or, you know, some might have a circular driveway, but that would be reviewed with the engineer's review.
Okay. And are there any city ordinances or requirements that state the number of garages permitted or required or anything? Nothing? Okay. How often is it that the lots are perfectly straight?
I guess, I believe it depends on the area. Some areas in town are more square than others.
Right. So, it's not exactly extenuating circumstance if the setbacks follow a curved line, although we know homes are generally square and typically not rounded. But I just wanted to see if that is the primary reason for saying that that is something that should justify a variance?
Well, based on grades of the lot, this is a tuck-under garage. So, there isn't the opportunity here to do any adding on to the first floor without creating or adding on to the basement. But the way that the lot is situated today, it is much closer to the east property line than the west. And the east property line is less square, I'd say, than the west property line in this circumstance.
Okay. And the tree coverage, what's our requirements in terms of tree removal when you do an addition?
Do you know what Luther is looking at when he is reviewing?
I believe, and don't quote me on this, if it's 10 feet around the addition, it does not require replacement, but if it is outside of that, if it falls outside of that, then a replacement would be required. And a replacement would be required for removal if there's a driveway that goes in. Okay. And then, the final question is, obviously, when we look at city standards for compliance, building coverage. Building coverage is only the building itself, the structure itself. It would not take into account any of that bituminous driveway or the second driveway that's being added or any sidewalks or patios or decks or porches. Is that correct?
It includes the patios and the decks, anything over 150 square feet, the first 150.
Oh, you, the first 150. Okay, so, if there's no deck or patio, would you factor in concrete walk-in steps into that 150?
Not generally, no.
Not generally? Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Nemirov?
I think so. In the plans, one thing I noticed was that the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District had submitted, had issued a permit and that, you know, that's great. Is that out of, it's nice. We don't usually see that, I think. Is that something that's gonna happen more often or is it just that this developer was a little bit more dotted, you know, faster to dot i's and cross t's? Or is this gonna be a new standard? It's great to get the Watershed District permit before it comes before us.
Yeah, typically, it doesn't happen that way, but this is, it is something that is required in this instance and they just happened to get it before they had to go through the permitting process.
Thanks.
Commissioner Shaffs?
Sort of a follow-up to that same issue. I mean, I saw the Nine Mile Creek permit issued and then the engineering report that there was sort of an outstanding issue about dealing with stormwater. Doesn't, I guess, aren't they the same concern or?
The stormwater concern with the engineering, no, that's okay. But the engineering memo is due to capacity with the storm sewer, so there'll be some mitigation that's required.
Okay. And that's standard, so that's like some sort of holding design or something?
It could be.
Okay. But, and that would be dealt with during the?
Permitting process.
Building permit process?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Regarding that issue, since the staff report doesn't go into heavy detail about it, can you elaborate a little bit about what sort of mitigation is required?
I can't speak to exactly what will be required from the engineering department, but that will be reviewed by the engineer during the building permitting process.
Great. Thank you, Emily. So, is the applicant here? Would they like to speak? Emily, you don't have to, but you can. And just go to like, yeah, that would be great. And just state your name and address. That would be wonderful.
My name's Craig Schofield. I'm at 5601 Wooddale Avenue in Edina.
I'm Kevin Rocha. I'm a homeowner at 6301.
And I guess I'd just like to say that the questions that were addressed by the commission are, have already been addressed in our plan, planning. The driveway is the first, the original driveway is in the plans of changing that garage. We'll be taking the driveway out eventually as the project goes forward. And also, the mitigation, Kevin is going to be re-landscaping the property after the building process goes to be mitigating stormwater. And we've been following with the Nine Mile Creek and the engineering department for that. Anything else?
Okay, great.
Questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Oh, so you will be taking out the driveway? That's the plan?
Yeah. You know, as my wife and I get older, we don't wanna have to climb stairs, so we're, we don't know what we're gonna do with the current garage, but we're gonna take the driveway out for sure, partly because either over time or the way it was built, the house actually has some drainage toward the house.
Yeah.
And so, it needs to be re, that needs to be corrected. And the current, this house was empty for a couple of years and wasn't necessarily completely well-maintained, so the driveway is actually falling apart. So, the simplest thing, since we don't intend to use the garage, is just take the driveway out. And I suspect eventually, we'll convert the garage to some kind of living space.
Oh, well, that answers my second question, then. I wondered what you were planning to do with the lower level? No lower level plans were included, not that they are, but it would help understand sort of how you were planning to.
Right now, we've just been focused on, you know, trying to get the new garage. There was an issue with the existing kitchen, so we need to do a new kitchen. You know, to the extent my wife and I have talked about it, you know, we assume we'll convert it to some kind of living space, but we haven't actually, you know, talked to anybody about doing plans or what that would be. But I think we'll convert it to, you know, a rec room or something.
And who's your architect?
GBR, excuse me, GBR Remodeling. I'm with Schofield Homeworks and he's a partner with me and he does the drawing for us.
You're also the contractor?
Yes.
Okay. The, so could you talk a little bit about the mitigation? What are the methods that you're gonna be using for the stormwater? Because this is into a landlocked, holding pond, so curious.
Right. Now, Nine Mile Creek has not required anything nor has, or the engineering has not gotten into the details. We told them we'd be working with landscapers to work with that and Kevin intends to be doing quite a bit of updating on the landscaping because we have a lot of negative grade towards the house. And so, a lot of that has to be corrected with grading and you can do that with rain gardens or bringing it towards the back of the lot.
Okay, so that's why I would assume that Nine Mile Creek probably doesn't weigh in on us, 'cause it doesn't really feed to the creek.
Correct.
It is totally into a landlocked, stormwater-holding pond. In fact, we had a proposal to this commission that came to houses that were, their backyards are going into that flood zone now, so when they get that 100-year flood, it's literally coming to their back doors. It would've been helpful to see those plans. It sounds like there's a lot more information than what we have seen in this packet.
Which plans are you referring to?
Your landscaping, stormwater, drainage concept.
It hasn't gotten to that point. We wanted to go to the variance route first because otherwise, the other plans would be basically a waste of money.
Except that you're in a zone where stormwater drainage is an issue. So, that is gonna be primary concern of mine, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. That's it for my questions.
James Gibson?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this is also a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Hearing now, is there a motion to?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you. A second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, bringing it back to the planning commission, are there any additional comments or motion? Commissioner Lee?
So, this is an interesting case. It is in that area that is one of the sensitive parts of Edina that have those landlocked basins. I take a little exception with the late 60s as I'm heading into that zone too, but everyone will be, obviously. So, I'm trying to use that sort of as my justification maybe for the granting of this variance, but then I realize that in itself, as I said, everyone will reach that point. And so, if we base a variance decision or request on trying to accommodate all aging in place, I think that that might be a difficult one to make everyone happy with. Had it not been for this stormwater issue, which I think I could've, if I had a little more information, how that was gonna happen. I'm glad to hear that the driveway is not gonna stay, 'cause actually, the survey shows that if you were to count, interestingly enough, the survey lists a proposed hardcover, even though we only look at lot coverage, but it will be a total hardcover of 24.4 percent. The city does allow 25 percent, but given the grading issues here, I think that's kind of reaching a limit in my mind. There's also a tree on the driveway, the new driveway side, that I think will have to come down. And it's a substantial size, 30-inch diameter tree. So, although it shows up in the rendering of the new garage, that's the big tree directly behind it, that will be gone. That's actually an incorrect rendering. So, there's not much that can be done for that, obviously, and I wouldn't base my objections solely on that, the removal of that tree, but it is a shame. I do think that there would be ways if, that good designers can look at this plan, of course, not seeing the whole house and the whole plan. I do believe there are difficulties in trying to get the right layout, but there is so much more space on the other side of the site where the current garage is that it would lend me to think that with a little more exploration, there might be other options, either to come out forward of the house. There's actually quite a bit of space in the front yard as well. And that whole corner there has the bulk of the space. So, this is the simplest solution. It makes sense from a simplicity standpoint, but if it's strictly to just add a garage and get it in the right place with a current floor plan, I think that there's, there might be some other ways to be explored. So, I think from my perspective, it would be hard for me to grant a variance for this particular request.
Any other comments or motion?
I just had a question.
Sure.
Part of the staff recommended action, there was, you know, conditions and comments listed in the environmental engineer's memo. Was that included in here or was it just the brief excerpt? Is it just, yeah. So, that is it? So, basically, really, the only condition on that is the second half of the grading and drainage or the first paragraph referring SP 003.
Did you, are you good? Do you have more comments?
Yeah, I'm good. I think just a comment with kinda echoing some of other people's, it just would've been nice to have a little more information with some of this, even in the staff memo to maybe explain a little bit more about what that mitigation is, since it seems like it's kinda hinging on some people's decision-making for this and mine certainly too, but for conditioning, the fact that that's met, I'm obviously okay with that.
I move approval of the variance, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff memo.
Yes, sir.
With the condition that the driveway be removed.
Agreed.
Great. Okay. Motion and second? Oh, you just did the amendment, you didn't say. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Thank you. Okay, then motion's been made and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. So, motion carries. Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is a variance request for a rear yard setback for a garage addition at 4707 Towns Road.
Chair members of the commission, the subject property is located at 4707 Towns Road. It consists of a two-story home with a side loading garage as highlighted here. Here's a little more detailed aerial view of it. The lot is quite wide, but it's rather shallow given its width. So, it's, the home sits up on a hill. There's about a 20-foot grade difference between where the road is and where the back corner of the lot is, the northeast corner of the lot. So, there's, the home sits up on a hill and then the grade in the rear yard continues to increase. This is what the home currently looks like. Now, there is a building permit in place, so if you did go by, there may have been some activity going on. And as part of the project, they decided to change their garage design a bit. The home was built in the 1940s and the purpose of the additions is to try to maintain the integrity of the existing structure. They did not wanna tear down, rebuild. They wanted to try to modernize the existing structure and add on to it so that it could accommodate their needs. Currently, that side-loading garage, though, is quite shallow and it really doesn't address their needs. And the house then becomes a little crowded towards the north side. This gives you a little idea of the elevation changes on the lot. This is an existing survey of the home and then also the proposed addition. What they're going to do is they will remodel that existing side-loading garage that will become living space and then there is a second floor above that. They will add on a new front-loading garage, which, as you go further back into the lot, the garage gets banked into the hill. The garage looks pretty sizable in plan, however, the floor plans will show you that the width of the garage is actually only about 24 feet inside of the garage because they also have a mudroom proposed, a hallway. And as a result of that, they can't move any further north to try to widen that new garage. So, what they've proposed to do and what they're coming in for a variance for is to add a small section to the back of the garage that will be below grade within the 20-foot, 25-foot rear yard setback, however. So, the variance is a 9.1-foot rear yard setback variance to allow the back wall of a portion of the garage to be 15, a little over 15 feet away from that rear lot line, however, it will be below grade and you won't be able to see it. This is the stormwater management plan. Now, there has already been a stormwater, and this is what we actually get when the permit comes in, so we do actually get the rate and runoff. So, they've already done that for the proposed project. The engineers, city engineers, also looked at it in terms of the small addition and it does meet the requirements. This is renderings of what they're proposing. So, this is the new garage. The old garage has been converted into living space. It's now a front-loading garage and as you can see, towards the north, it's banked into the hill and the area in question is actually underground. Now, the zoning ordinance allows you to overlap halfway into the required setback if you have a structure that's completely below ground and not visible from the surface. And in this instance, because you have a garage door in the front and you can actually see it, if you open up a garage door, you can see that back part of the garage, that part of the ordinance does not apply. So, if this were completely below grade and a basement and there was no way to visually see it from any angle from the outside, they actually wouldn't need a variance, but they do in this instance. This gives you an idea of that new structure. The darker area is the addition portion that they're requesting a variance for. This is the floor plan showing that, and this shows you that the width of the garage really isn't that wide considering modern standards. A lot of that garage area ends up being a mudroom, hall, laundry area. And this is the second floor that's proposed, which meets all of the requirements. The, like I said, there has already been a permit issued for this project, so it meets all of the ordinance requirements, but in the process of looking at the design, the proposed garage really didn't meet their needs. And given the setback requirements, they thought this was the most thoughtful solution. They didn't wanna try to widen it up and get closer to their neighbor to the north. Instead, going underground would be the solution that they felt would be most appropriate. And here's a section showing that area. It's a little bit lower in ceiling height, but it does meet their needs. And again, some elevations. The only real change to the front of the house is they're adding a front overhang with columns, which meets our requirements. And then, you'll see that new front-loading garage, but that's set much further back than the existing front wall of the house. And some other side views of the home. And again, that south, pardon me, north elevation showing that below-grade garage So, the primary issue, the Minnesota State statutes require that the variance meet the requirements of a, that there are practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use of the property. There are practical difficulties in designing for the existing home and its present location on a rather shallow lot, given its width. It's wider than it is deep. They're also contending with a topography change. I believe the owners have done an admirable job in keeping the integrity of the existing home while adding space for a more modern building standard. They're mindful of their neighbor to the north and they don't want to try to get a variance to get. get a variance to get closer in that regard. The circumstances are unique to the property. The original house placement and design and the size of the lot and grade changes from front to back do limit their opportunities. They also didn't want to push forward with anything. There's some significant trees in the front of the house. They also have a leveled out area where the driveway is, where they can actually maneuver the cars to turn around and, and head straight out onto the street. And the proposed variance and home addition remodel were specifically designed to maintain the essential character of the neighborhood. So the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The whole idea of the design was to maintain that 1940s integrity of the White Oaks home. Staff is recommending approval of the variance. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, Plan, Chris, yeah, the view you have up is, is, is a good, so for, I mean, so the roofline of the new garage is lower than the existing house, right? So?
Yes. This is the roof, ridge roofline of the existing home.
Okay. And now, let's go to that, which is the reason for the variance. So where it says proposed below-grade garage expansion, okay. So it's that extension to the east that is causing the variance request. Could you go through that explanation of, so, under one situation, that below-grade expansion like that would not have triggered any issues, but it, it is, and for what reason again?
Because if you opened up the garage door, you could see the improvement. If there's some, if there is a structure like a sub-basement, we do have situations in Edina where you have a sub-basement, a wine cellar, a media room, a safe house, safe room. Those areas actually, if they are completely below grade and you cannot see them from the outside, then they can actually extend halfway into the required setback area and they do not require a variance.
So standing in the driveway, the garage door up?
And you can see the back of it, then we have to say it requires a variance. Because there is an opening to the outside.
All right. Thank you.
Chris, you said this project's already under construction, is that right?
They have a permit for it. I don't know how far along they are, but they do have a permit to.
Okay. And then what was the original plan for the, the garage? Is it, is that one of these plans?
It's exactly the same, except that extension.
So it's, it's the AO3 one?
I think it was the first, maybe one of the first surveys that I had up that was...
It was a third one in their set of drawings, so back to the...
Yeah, I, it's, it's basically just that box that was added to it. The rest of it was, is, is what they have a permit to start with, so.
Right. Okay. Okay, thanks. Commissioner Navarro?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, kind of following up Commissioner Lee's comment. Why is, if Plan AO3, it's entitled conforming, why does that plan not work?
And I guess I'm trying to figure out which one that is. This one? This one?
Perhaps that's more of a question for the applicant, Chris, I don't...
Well, my understanding is they, they weren't really that happy with the garage, the width the way it was, or the, the amount of space they had, given, you know, the area that they had to work with. And instead of trying to get closer to that adjacent neighbor, they decided to try to go deeper with the garage. The garage width on the inside is about 24 feet wide, given the mudroom and the hallway and all the rest of it. So it's not, it's not really all that large in terms of garage widths from, you know, what most people want. This gives them some additional space in the back. It's not a, it's, the height is not as high as you probably want it either. It was just a way for them, you know, after they've looked at their plans and, you know, probably walked through it, it just was something that they felt they, they needed and, and wanted. Staff doesn't believe it really has any detrimental effect from an exterior perspective.
Any other questions for Chris? Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission staff. My name is John Monson. I'm president of the Land Shoot Group, an Excelsior-based architectural and construction firm. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant. If you want to know, my address is 202 Water Street in Excelsior. The applicant is not able to be here tonight, being out of town. So I, I appreciate staff's support and I, I think that Chris made all the points I would like to make. It might help for you to understand how we got to this point, okay? Asking for a variance is the last thing I want to do. As an architect, I want to be able to creatively design for a solution that will work within the guidelines of a municipality. In this case, as the, this young family for whom I'm working laid out to me their program, they have a young family, small kids, family's going to be getting larger. The interesting, and I'm, I'm assuming you're familiar with the neighborhood and maybe you even checked out the home, but beautiful home. We want to do everything we can to save it and, you know, make it last for another 80 years. But you can see how it's kind of perched on that mid-level between the low spot on Towns and the high spot in the backyard. So at the very beginning of the design process, the, the homeowner was saying, you know, geez, we have no place for our kids' stuff. You know, we have this little plateau of a driveway. The existing garage is, is very small by today's standards and was in the perfect spot for a family room off a new kitchen. So I advised the homeowner, I said, you know, let's see if we can design something so that we fit within the ordinances. We got our permit, we started the demolition, we haven't done anything with respect to the new addition. And the homeowner said, well, geez, you know, this, the more I stand out here and they purchased the home in the winter and we designed the home in the winter, and so here we are in the spring, standing out there, there's just this teeny little plateau, you know, I don't want my kids' balls rolling down the, into the street. I don't want their bikes rolling down into the street. I really would like to have more depth in the back of the garage so that we can keep stuff out of the driveway, off the street, and back where it's of no consequence to anyone. I said, well, you know, then we'll have to go in for a variance. So in the meantime, looking at all other options, which I think Chris was pointing out, we, we have a graphic on the site plan showing, okay, so let's say we move it forward so that we're bringing it closer to the street. It reduces the size of that landing plateau unless we want to cut down or do something with those two beautiful oak, I think one's an oak, one's one a maple, but maybe they're both oak, specimen trees that, in order to create a proper-sized landing, which is still minimal, we're going to impinge on the root structures of the trees. I have a, a letter from my arborist saying, you know, that's not a good idea. And we would increase the slope of that, that grade by probably about 5%. And I think it was already over your, your ordinance maximum anyway. So we're here tonight asking for, for a variance, believing that, that we have significant practical difficulties and that this is a reasonable request because no one will know it's there, unless the door's open and you're looking back and you can see the depth of it, which, you know, if it pleased the city, we'd just put doors between the non-conforming and the conforming parts so you couldn't see. But we, we hope that you will support staff's recommendation. And I, I believe the homeowner has provided a, a letter from the neighbor to the north. I'm, I'm not sure if they had any success contacting the other neighbors, but the last thing we want to do is, is affect the neighborhood, much less the, the character of the home and the, the quality of the, the finished product. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the applicant, Commissioner Lee? So I can ask you this question then. So the original plan was to have the structure, the garage structure where it is. The only thing you're asking now is can we push back into that below-grade portion? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what you were trying to...
What you saw in blue in the back of the section, and we even went with a lower seven-foot height, so our plank would be below grade, our waterproofing and all that, and we had enough soil to make the grass grow.
Okay. And so with your A03 conforming option, you're just trying to show this is the amount of space the homeowner would like to accomplish, that sort of extra space in the garage. Now we pushed it forward. Unfortunately, if we do that, the apron's going to have to splay out a little more and we're going to be hitting that tree. That's the purpose of showing that?
Absolutely. We wanted to show a conforming alternative, which I believe, and I think staff agrees, is a less desirable alternative.
Right. Okay. Let me see. I, I think it's, okay, that's, that's great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this application?
I'm Peggy Johnson. We live at 4701 White Oaks Road. I think the drawings are beautiful and I like the fact that we're protecting trees. My concern is that we have spoken of variances to the north and concern for that neighbor. My concern is for the people in the backyard of, of this home. It is not a big backyard and we're pushing back further and we're right into what little backyard the houses on White Oaks have there, which is tiny, one of them. And it just seems like we're working with the front of the building and not considering the next street or the back. Thank you.
And just for clarification, there's not a structure that's going to be seen in the back? So it's going to look the same? Is that correct, Chris?
I think the height of it is...
Is bumping up?
Way up. We initially thought in the neighborhood, you know, just raking leaves and whatever, that it was going to be just a garage. We didn't see the, the elevation on it.
The bump.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, so bringing it back to the planning commission for discussion. Commissioner Nav...
Two things. First of all, I agree with the resident's comment. These are really attractive drawings and I appreciate Mr. Monson for providing them. One issue I'm struggling with is really what are the practical difficulties with this project? I mean, it's a beautiful addition to a beautiful house and I'm just wondering, I mean, when, when I get to practical difficulties, I'm wondering, is this the only, is only a non-conforming option, really the only reasonable option? And I, I look at the size, the magnitude of the changes and the magnitude of what's left and I'm wondering what the practical difficulties are. So I'm kind of asking as a question if other people on the commission, other commissioners could help me understand what the practical difficulties driving the need for the variance. I would appreciate it.
Mr. Boebi?
Well, the way I'm looking at this is, the only reason that a request for variance is required is in the instance where the garage door is open and someone's standing right there. You know, for practical purposes, no one's going to see this. It's underground and it seems to be sort of a quirk of the way the code is written because no, no one's going to see it, right? But I guess technically because the garage door could be open and someone could be standing there, we're here talking about it. But, but I don't have an issue. And I do respect the opinion that, you know, the people who back up to it will see this maybe more than if it weren't built at all or if it were shorter. But, but it is, you know, we're not discussing the height. The height is within the variance. What we're discussing is this piece that's not seen and the neighbors from the back aren't going to see it either. So I don't have an issue with it.
Commissioner Lee?
Actually, the, the height is the same, so that was already approved. There was going to be a garage there. What they're asking is same garage, we just, we want to push back. So back to your question about the variance request, it really is just a request of the homeowner on considering it, having a second thought and saying, we would like to get a little more out of our garage and we think there's a way to do it that's not obtrusive. But is the city okay with us doing this? It's going to be, by your rules, require this variance. It is not seen, so you can weigh it from, are you just going to strictly apply the rule? Or do you feel that there is some, some, something here that visually or can impact or the neighbors or stormwater runoff, something changed about the design that would lead you to say, to vote against it? So in this particular case, I find this one a little more acceptable because we don't have, we're not changing anything related to the grade. There is going to be some slight modification, but I didn't get the indication that this was as extreme of an issue from the previously approved plans. I don't believe that, what did we call it, within conforming option, I don't believe the family would proceed with that. It was strictly an illustration for us to show what the impact would be if they wanted these, the same features, but this is how they would have to get it. I think if we did not approve it today, they would probably just keep their, to their original plan and have to come, come to grips with the fact that they won't have that additional space.
Any other comments or motion?
I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but, you know, I do take issue with practical need. What we're building is a 27-foot wide by 40-foot-deep garage. That's a four-car garage head to tail. That car, that, a house that size, 7,000 square feet, probably needs a four-car garage. But that's what's happening here. And is it a need? I don't know that the world needs four cars. The world wants four cars. And it's, I think it's done as sensitively and carefully as it can. And, you know, we all know how difficult it is to grow grass when you've only got four inches of soil on top of it, so I wish you luck there. But other than that, I, you know, this isn't a need variance. This is a want variance.
I move to approve the variance, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff memo.
Second. So there's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
So-- All right, so the last public hearing is a variance request of the front yard setback for an addition at 5512 Hillside Court.
The third variance tonight is for 5512 Hillside Court, and it is, the subject property is approximately 15,000 square feet in area and is located on the north side of Hillside Court, south of Nine Mile Creek. The existing home on the lot is a two-story home built in 1966. The applicant is proposing an eight-foot variance for an addition to the front facade of the existing home. The applicant is also asking for a five-by-12-foot addition on the east side of the home, but that addition conforms to the required setbacks. Here on your screen is a rendering of the existing home, and below it is a rendering of the proposed facade of the new home, or of the additions and changes to the home. The proposed addition requiring the variance is within the area that is currently an overhang or a lockout porch for the existing structure. The proposed addition requiring the variance, like I said, is a six-and-a-half by 13-foot addition to the front of the home. It will be an extension of the existing entryway. The proposed addition will be 27.5 feet from the front property line, a difference of eight feet from the required 35.5-foot setback. The second addition is off to the east of the existing home and meets the required setbacks. That addition will sit 14 feet from the east property line. The proposed addition meets all required setbacks, or the proposed addition and changes to the existing structure meet all required setbacks and zoning requirements but the front yard setback. Any grading must not impact any adjacent neighbors, and drainage will continue to flow to the street as it does today. The engineer has reviewed the application and has submitted comments in the attached memo. Like we stated a couple times tonight, Minnesota statute and the ADINA zoning ordinance require that there are conditions that must be met affirmatively. The proposed variance must meet those conditions. Tonight, the practical difficulty is that the lot is not square. Hillside Court is a curved street, and the property line does, is curved to match the curvature of the street. The addition will match the setback of the existing front porch today, but due to that addition being an enclosed space, it would need to meet the required front yard setback. Staff believes that granting the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood, and the addition to the front of the home will be in the same area of the existing front porch today, and it will blend in with other homes within the neighborhood and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. With that being said, tonight's recommendation is to approve an eight-foot front yard setback variance at 5512 Hillside Court. Staff recommends the variance, subject to the findings listed in the staff report and subject to the plans presented, and compliance with all conditions and comments in the engineer's memo.
Thank you. Are there questions for Emily? Commissioner Strauss?
Emily, was the house non-conforming to begin with?
That because the overhang, the front porch wasn't enclosed. There is an, the setback is being measured today. Looks like this was 29.7, so it did not meet the front yard setback.
Right. So the existing condition right now is already non-conforming.
And it's too, sorry, let me--
Should be 35, it never was. Is that right?
No, but it was, it's 35 to the main portion of the home, not the covered porch.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, now you can go, Commissioner Strauss. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, Emily, I think that was sort of, so the front line, I mean, what would be the south side, south line of the house, isn't changing, and it's the nature, the porch that is existing is an open, whatever, just kind of platform, and then now it's enclosed--
A portion of that is proposed to be enclosed with the addition.
Okay.
Here on the screen, I'm, yeah. This is where the porch is today. This is the proposed addition, so a portion of the porch will be enclosed, and then there is an open porch above that, closer to the street.
And they've gone over, that setback requirement was what, determined by properties either direction?
The front yard setback, yep.
Yeah.
Is set by the--
Same side of the street.
Existing houses, on either side.
And like I said, it's one big curve, though it is. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Strauss, did you have a comment? Okay. Are there questions for staff? Oh, just one sec. Sue, go ahead.
I think the same PDF was printed twice, so maybe like save some paper, because like, I mean, it's not important, but like, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Lee.
Just a comment. I found the plans really hard to read, so in the future, you might ask for legible plans. They seem to have been scanned, but the dimensions were hard to read. It would be helpful if staff would lay off where that actual, highlight where that 29, where the variance figure is. I know it showed up on that survey, but it's kind of hard to see, so that just would make it a little more easy to find the information. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Would they like to speak?
I'm here.
You don't have to speak. Are there any questions for the applicant? All right. You're safe. You can stay back there. And it's also a public hearing, but it looks like you're the only public out there, so I'm guessing--
Move to close the public hearing.
Move to close. Is there a second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Great. So I'll bring it back to the Commissioner Bennett.
I just have a comment. This is pretty minimal, and it's a great facelift to the structure. I think one thing to think about aesthetically, that this is a benefit just in its situation. Say all these houses are lined up and someone juts out, right, that might look, you know, it might break up that line of the houses negatively, but being on this curve, if you're standing at the front of either of the neighboring houses, this does not encroach on any views or look different at all. So I think it's very tastefully done.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of the variance.
Was somebody saying something? Oh, sorry. You're behind, you're behind that screen. I can't even--
I move approval of the variance, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff memo.
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. I'm going fast. I want to get home by eight. No, not going to make that, 8:15. So it's next on the agenda, I'm not going to miss it tonight, is community comment. Guessing there is none, unless you've got community comment.
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, okay, so moving on, we've got reports and recommendations. Is there anything? Nope. Correspondence and petitions. Any correspondence and petitions? I think all the heart attack, if we ever have, some of those. Chair and member comments. So are there any updates with, go for it.
Just a couple things to note, one of which saw that the council rejected the proposal that we put through, or voted through on 72nd and France. I didn't know if staff or anyone wanted to maybe highlight why, and again, there's this departure, so I don't know. I feel like at least mentioning it, so we're thinking about it.
Good point.
Staff, any, you have any highlights about how we differed there?
Height and density usually comes up. That comes to mind.
Okay.
Traffic.
Watching it, you know, on rebroadcast, I guess, I was surprised that public turnout, there was, I mean, it was not unlike the-- Estelle. The Estelle project, and we didn't see, we didn't see that public position which came out to the council meeting, so I think we were maybe somewhat, I was surprised that there was that much opposition, because I didn't feel it in, when they presented to us. So that, that was a very noticeable thing. I mean, the chamber was packed, you know, for that presentation, so.
You know, I think that these projects have been in sort of the Southdale area, and it might, might be a good idea for the Greater Southdale Work Group to have a more public engagement with residents and stakeholders on heightened density. I think what we're finding, even as a planning commission, we're never sure, is that the right density? You know, the density basically is whatever the project is proposing, but then we're changing entire district land uses to match it. So in some ways, it's not much different than a small area plan. If we have these three meetings for the small area plan where you'd have a first, you know, here's what it's about, we'd seek your input, then you check in and say, well, here's where we're headed. Does it seem like we're going the right direction? What do you like? And then by the third one, you're kind of saying, this is, this is where we've landed. I'm not sure that's really happened with the Greater Southdale Work Group, probably because of its many phases, and it's been going on for three years. But height and density is going to be a big issue, I think, and especially this is the year of the update, that it falls into Chapter Four, land use, which the planning commission is in charge of. So as we ask our commissions and boards to look at their chapters and tell us what they want to keep, revise, delete, we might need to do that as a planning commission and look at the land use and say, are we going to keep those height diagrams? Do the land uses still make sense? Should the density figures change, rather than waiting for a project to come to us as the reason to change? And I think maybe that's what's bringing out the public, because there hasn't been that, that opportunity. So that's just a thought.
Well, I think it was always great to have public involvement, but the Southdale Work Group publishes its meeting schedule, and unlike many small area plans, it actually allows public comment with each meeting, even though small group, small area plan working groups aren't supposed to. And there is going to be a community meeting pretty soon. Other than that, I don't know if there are suggestions for other, and it also has several community members on the commission, so if there are other things that they should be doing to engage the community, I'm sure the working group would be open to any suggestion for other ways to engage. But I think it's, it has engaged people, and it does have plenty of opportunity for engagement, so.
I think there's yet another facet to that. I think the small area plan assignment, the team assignment, the work group assignment is not to be political. It is not to look at what people may suggest is a good thing or a bad thing, but to discover to the best of their ability, through their research and hard work, what they believe is best for ADINA, and to present that. And I think that's certainly what the 50th and France group is trying to do. It's certainly what the Southdale Small Area Plan has tried to do for three years. It cannot pay attention to what some vocal people in the community might want to suggest is the right answer, who have not done the research and have not spent the time and do not understand the principles and the hard work that's gone into understanding those principles and why it's necessary. That's council's job, and I have every faith that they will do it wisely and well. It's not planning commissioner's job. We are not a political body. We're an advisory group.
Continue this.
I just have to respond to that, just because it kind of implied something. Seeking public input isn't the same thing as saying that vocal people get their way. It's simply a step in a process, so that, that is sort of what I was implying.
Anyway, I'm just, I have to say too that I agree with exactly what Commissioner Hamilton and Emmeralda said. It's been three years of intensive work. We've been very open with the steps that we're taking and what the future steps are going to be. There will be a lot of public opportunity that are coming up. It's not a small area plan. It's Greater Southdale area framework, and we've always been very clear on the overall vision and versus looking specifically at height and density. We've been, you know, looking at the bigger picture, and again, with the greater good for ADINA, so. But that is what, so that, to respond to your first question, it was the height, the density, even affordable housing came up as one of the reasons, I think, that it just wasn't going to work in that location or something. So they did. Anyway, did you have another comment?
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure we're all surprised with how that went, and I think part of that too is, my other comment is, it seems like obviously our body and that body is starting to kind of have some sort of departure in, you know, the way that we're voting together, and--
Voting apart.
Voting apart, sorry. And just evident maybe in, you know, the public coming to it. It's like if, you know, if no one showed up for ours and everyone shows up for the council, it's kind of frustrating. They see that our opinion might not matter as much as maybe it once it used to. So I guess one of the things I was thinking of, just solution-wise, is, as we have some of these joint work sessions, I've talked to a couple people in the community that kind of do a lot of visioning type of stuff. There's different, like the new urbanism, things that I think we understand and the council understands, but maybe there's opportunity during these work sessions to have a training component where the council and us are together learning the same type of things, so we can maybe discuss those. So we are more aligned in the same direction versus just having it strictly work. So I don't know if something like that could be considered to be incorporated.
Before you talk, just one sec. One of the things, the reasons why there wasn't as many residents at our, the planning commission was because the notice didn't go to the, is it the neighborhood? There's like a neighborhood group. So I think that that's just, so it doesn't reflect--
Okay.
That they're not as interested in what the planning commission, the word just didn't get out as far as, go ahead.
That's very important. I'm glad you, so one thing I wanted to address though is, there is a difference in roles between the planning commission and the city council, and, and we shouldn't necessarily be in alignment with the city council. The planning commission is intended to be a neutral arbiter of, here's the issues that come before me, here are the rules as I understand it, is, does this make sense according to the rules? Whereas a city council is supposed to pay attention to the rules too, but they're also a policymaking body and an electoral body that is intended, that is supposed to pay more attention to, and how does it impact this individual? How does it impact the broader community in terms of, do people like it? And if the city council takes in a, into consideration how people like something, that is an appropriate thing for them to do, which is, but I would say that's not appropriate for the planning commission, and that we shouldn't be imposing like or dislike in our decision-making. And so in that regard, I think it's very-- And so in that regard, I think it's very normal for there to be occasions when we're seeing things on the opposite side, where we say, we applied, we look at the rules and we look at the situation and, yeah, you know, this makes sense as I understand the rules to be applied, and the city council looks at it, and they might, you know, something, I bet there's some people on the city council that would like to, on this project, say, I apply the rules, but they look at it and they say, ah, but I also have to represent the wishes of my constituents, and by rules it makes sense, but my constituents just don't want it. And that's a, and that's a right departure between the two groups.
Anything else, did anything else, oh, Commissioner Strauss?
Just a 70th and Cahill update. We, we have looked at it in a draft form and had considerable comments for the consultant. They are coming back, I believe we are meeting again June 28th with the material, with the report in a proposed final form, with all of the appendages and diagrams, and, and we will be looking at that, the group, you know, and anticipating that we're wrapping it up, so, but you never can tell. So, that's June 28th.
And then, so, your group is looking at it on June 28th, or the planning commission is...
The group, the small area group.
Okay. And then we'll come to planning commission.
And then, I'm not, Susan may have the dates of...
We're leaving it a little open-ended right now, kind of leaving it in the consultant's hands. Obviously, it needs to be wrapped up by the time the, the count plan update is due, but it will come before the planning commission, probably, I mean, I'm assuming this is really going to be pretty much the finalized form.
July, August?
Yeah, yeah.
August.
Yeah.
So, on behalf of John, I want to appreciate staff and everyone else in the commission for, based on how long I talk, ending the meeting soon, because we have the next 50th and France meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m., so we're grateful this isn't a midnight meeting. We're meeting in the mayor's conference room, right in the door, and it'll be the second 50th and France meeting, and we hope people can attend if they're able. We're very excited about what we're doing.
7:00 a.m.
7:00 a.m., is that in your language? Do you speak that?
I stay here.
Thank you for not making us stay here tonight.
You know, tomorrow morning is the HRA meeting at 7:30 a.m., so do you have a published schedule now? Do you, did you hash out the dates? Do you know when your group is meeting?
Yes, we have a published schedule. Chris, would you like to say where the, everything's posted?
It is posted.
Thank you, great. And I had one, one question, I guess, actually a suggestion. Now that we're going into summer, and this is probably for Chris or Carrie, those blockbuster projects or proposals as they cycle through, if you have any heads-up on sort of the timing of it, it would be really useful to have that knowledge out there. And obviously, you don't know exact dates, but you must have sort of an idea if there's any way you can get us sort of the next three months, just the summer. I think in some ways, we're doing our planning, and I'd stick around for some of those critical ones if you, if you knew anything about that, so I'll put a plug in for that. Thanks.
Motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meetings adjourned.